Alderman to order, if you would, please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Alderman Franklin?
Present.
Alderman Milner?
Present.
Alderman Chaney?
Present.
Alderman Turner?
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff? Not here yet. Alderman Mills?
Present.
Alderman Fauch and Alderman Davidson are excused. Mayor Zaring.
President, thank you. We have four of them. First up tonight, we are going to have some cer- settle some ceremonial matters here this evening. National Police Week proclamation of 2025. That time of year, again, very important that we recognize those in law enforcement across our nation. Puts our lives on the lines. I mean, a lot of sacrifices made to keep us safe, keep our community safe. So, very honored to be able to read a proclamation for those that serve. So, with that, National Police Week proclamation. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Harrisonville Police Department, whereas the members of the Harrisonville Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Harrisonville. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States that have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including Francis Vurt, Donald Marler, and Chandler Sumner, members of the Harrisonville Police Department. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Harrisonville has observed and will continue to observe May 11th through the 17th, 2025, as National Police Week in the City of Harrisonville and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. All right, thank you. Anything you'd like to say?
I'm just blessed to be working with the members of the Harrisonville Police Department and have such a supportive community and city.
All right, thank you. And next up, we have public participation. We do have a couple of agenda requests that were submitted for this evening. I, first, I will have, it looks like, vendor business license Amanda Stites have you come on up. And just wanted to, if you'd just give us your name and your address. And then, we had a discussion, a couple of work sessions back. I don't think we've actually got it put into the ordinance yet to raise the time limit from three minutes to five minutes.
Okay.
So...
I will probably need a fraction of that.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna honor the five minutes because we have discussed that. So you do have five minutes there and we'll keep track of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Amanda Stites. My address is 30118 South Main Street, Harrisonville, Missouri. And I am the Volunteer Market Manager for the Harrisonville Farmers and Artists Market. And I've been made aware that there's been some discussion about the mobile vendor licensing rules and current exemption language inclusive of the farmers' market. So I'm here tonight to briefly share a few things about the market and how we currently address vendor requirements and regulations. First, as some of you may know, this June will mark the 12th season of the market on the square. It occurs from 8:00 a.m. to noon Saturdays from June to the end of September. And since the market began in 2013, it has grown from a small group of five to 10 vendors to 30-plus vendors most Saturdays. The market offers a mixture of fresh produce, honey, baked goods, jams, jellies, eggs, as well as arts and crafts like soaps, quilts, jewelry, and candles. In that time, we've also grown the positive impact that the market makes to the health of downtown Harrisonville. In fact, last season, the market attracted over 7,000 visitors. Those same visitors often get breakfast or lunch at one of our downtown restaurants and also shop at retail locations as they make the loop around the square. That helps contribute to the financial success of those brick-and-mortar businesses, on average, making a $1,000 difference for those businesses between a market day and a non-market day. Now, for many of our vendors, selling at the market is either to share the things they are growing or making as a hobby, or a trial of sorts to see if that hobby could potentially grow into a micro or small business. It's those vendors who are in need of a low-risk, low-cost entry point that the market is especially well-suited for and that aligns well to our desire to support local entrepreneurship. Of course, we know that becoming a small business is, in part, ensuring that any requirements or regulations for your business type are met. However, we also know that that process can seem confusing and costly at first. That is why, as part of our vendor guidelines, we include information, making vendors aware that they should review what requirements apply to them and also provide information on where to start via our webpage at lovethesquare.org. Additionally, we discuss those items during our annual vendors meeting each April. After our volunteer organized and operated leaders have provided this information, we respect the privacy of our vendors. While we are always available to point in the right direction, asking vendors to submit all documentation to validate that they are each in full compliance with all applicable rules and requirements would place a burden on volunteers and would likely be perceived as a barrier to some vendors, especially hobbyists. For these reasons, the Harrisonville Farmers Market will continue to provide education and information, including any updates to the mobile vendor licensing rules, but ask that validation and enforcement of such rules remain with the entity that established them. Thank you for allowing me time to speak. If you have any questions, I'm happy to help.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have vendor business license Jessica Leveson Hussey. All right, just give us your name and address, please.
Hey, I'm Jessica Leveson Hussey. I have been in Harrisonville since I was in high school. My address is 1103 Bird Street. I was not living there in high school, though. So anyway, I have been deeply involved in our community, politically and otherwise. I actually used to be an alderman on this board. So I know all the stuff you guys have to deal with. This was brought to my attention by my daughter, Emma. She is actually in the farmers' market, and she was wondering how that would actually affect her. And so I actually called several city clerks around the area to ask what they were doing because a lot of times, my husband, he actually lives in Whitsville, Missouri, and he's an alderman there. He's in his sixth term as alderman. So, many of the clerks, I asked the question because I know that it was pondered, the idea of maybe having a zero-cost license. And specifically, the clerk in Peculiar, she was like, I talked to her about it and I talked about the vendor and all that stuff, and she said, "That would be a disaster." And I was like, she's like, "We would have to collect all this stuff." And so a lot of times, I think that we need to make sure that we're understanding that maybe we are putting a drain on our resources whenever we go, "Okay, we're gonna do this at zero cost." Maybe, if you think you need to do this at some point, find a reduced cost for those mobile vendors. But I have an idea on top of that. I talked to Daniel and we talked, he sent me all the state statutes that you guys were going off of. And so I understand what you guys are actually dealing with. I had a conversation with our Senator Rick Bratton about maybe some changes that need to be made at the state level because it seems like the state makes the rule, and then they're like, "Hey, figure out how to do this." And it doesn't work very well for the city. And when I was an alderman, I noticed that, you know, you've got the guys at the top and they're making these rules, and then they say, "Here, deal with this," you know, with really no understanding for what that does to you guys. And so, maybe find out like what it would actually cost the city if you were to do that. But I would like to see the change actually at the state level. So one idea that I had was that you put in, and I, like, if someone has a business license in another city, the city in which they reside, maybe consider that. Because then that way, they aren't having to go to every single place, every single city that they, because if they started doing this, you know, every single city that they went to, then they would have to receive a business license. If I'm understanding that appropriately, if everybody started doing this, which, there's nobody that I talk to that's actually doing that to the vendors. I did read the farmers' market, not farmers' market, but farmers' thing statute. And some of the people would qualify at the vendors' market, but like my daughter that does soap, she would not qualify. She would have to come get a business license. I don't have a problem with her doing that in all reality. Like, she files her taxes. She does what she needs to do. She's only done this a year now. But I think that we need to be careful not to go, "Okay, we're gonna do a zero cost, and then we have a drain on the city and the clerk and how many people that will involve." The other thing is, a lot of these people are coming in maybe on a Friday or Saturday. They're not necessarily around here all the time, and they're kind of a pop-up vendor. You've got vendor markets at Mallard Mall, Community Center, all that such. And so, for them to even know the rule, coming into different cities all the time, they may be expecting that that's not gonna happen. So then the question is enforcement. So if you can't enforce it, or you start enforcing it on different people, that's not functional at all. I would suggest that any physical structure, of course, building or food truck, need a business license. When I talked to the city clerk in Peculiar, she said that they have a rule, it's a 48-hour rule. So basically, if you're there two days within a time period doing business in the city as a food truck in particular, and you may need to outline food truck in a policy, then they require them to have a city license. So I think we need to look at timeframes of who's spent there. Think about all our things we have, like our festivals. I'm sure you guys have already thought about some of that. But we need to come up with those, those ideas and make sure that we can enforce whatever we're doing because we don't want to look like we're picking out certain people. But the one, the other thing that she said is that they require, when they come to get a food handler, or when they come to get a license and they have a food truck, that they provide that county food handler's license. So that's another thing that we need to consider because we do wanna be safe and we don't want people getting sick, and we wanna know that they know how to handle their food. So I do find that the food trucks...
Hold your thought real quick.
Yes, sir.
We're at five minutes?
Okay.
Am I asked to board? Are you good? Given three more minutes? Good? All right, good to go.
Thank you.
Yep, yep.
So, and I, and I can wrap this up. These are just some of my ideas. And I, and I do know that you guys are dealing with state statutes. So, I mean, that's, I don't have to go on and on. But I, I do wanna kind of leave you at this. So, when I was an alderman, the questions I started asking myself was, is, am I just, are we just coming up with this rule because the staff came to us and they suggested it? My husband deals with that all the time. Like, I realize you guys think this is a good idea, but how does this play out for the citizens? Is this good? Is this good for the community? And then when it comes to spending money on things, and that would include adding something that is costly to the city, which, okay, are you gonna have to employ another person to be able to keep up with the amount of business license that you would have to produce? That could be a problem. So you have to ask yourself, whatever money is, you know, say a thousand dollars is a lot of money to you, would you spend that on whatever item is that you think you have to purchase? So whenever you go to do anything as an alderman and you go to decide whether you're going to buy something or do something, would I pay for that out of my own money if it was mine? Because I think all too often, officials from federal level down, they always look at things and it's like it's not their money. And we should look at it like it is our money. We should always look at it. So everything we do, we should, we should make sure that we would want that done to us. So, anyway, I, I can kind of keep it at that. I appreciate the extra time, Mayor Zaring.
Yep, definitely.
And if any of you ever wanna talk to me or call me about stuff, my brain is always going. And, and I have that experience and still continue to have experience in the policy realm. So, I'd be happy to talk to you.
Awesome. Well, I appreciate you all coming out here because that does mean a lot. It's good to hear people to come out and talk to us. We learn something, we understand something, or we can put more thought into it when you get that feedback. So it does mean a lot when you all take the time. I know there's better things you could probably be doing right now to come out here and talk and put that out. So we do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, thank you. And so we're gonna move on to the approval of the minutes. We'll start with the Board of Aldermen Regular Meeting, April 21st, 2025, and those were in your packet.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. A motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those will stand. Next, we have the Board of Aldermen Work Session, April 21st, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Chaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those stand. Next, we will have the Board of Aldermen Work Session from April 28th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve.
And a motion from Alderman Chaney with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those stand, as written. So that moves along to our agenda items. And first up on our agenda is Council Bill 16.
Council Bill 16, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, adopting goals for the City of Harrisonville, Missouri.
And, or, seated administrator, Mr. Rattan?
So if you all recall from the work session retreat that we had, we went over the policies for the city as well as the short-term goals based on the changes you all wanted to see from that is what you see here tonight.
Any questions? Nope. I think we had a good, long discussion that night about all of that. So I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Franklin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Chaney?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Fauch, Davidson, and Dorhoff are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 16 is now Resolution 2025-07. Next, we have Council Bill 17.
Council Bill 17, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville to demonstrate the City of Harrisonville's commitment to the Harrisonville Police Department and public safety, including the reduction of violent crime within Harrisonville.
All right, you're up.
So Governor Keough established the Blue Shield Program as part of his Safer Missouri Initiative. So we're requesting that the Board sign the resolution so that the Harrisonville Police Department can apply for the Blue Shield Program, which will open us up to additional grant money, possibly, for training for our police officers.
Awesome. Any questions?
That's a good idea.
All right. Seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Chaney with a second from Alderman Milner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Chaney?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff, Davidson, and Fauch are excused.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Council Bill 17 is now Resolution 2025-08. Next up, we have Council Bill 18.
Council Bill 18, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville authorizing the city administrator to enter into a state and municipal leasure/purchase agreement with Clayton Holdings LLC for the purchase of two 2025 Ford Police Interceptors with upfitting.
Jeremy?
Good evening, Mayor, Board. Tonight, this is a resolution so that, working in conjunction with the Holdings Company for Commerce Bank, that we can work through to actually purchase four vehicles. The two in the title are for the police vehicles, the two others are an admin vehicle, and then one heavy truck to help with the lead service line project. Staff went out, outside of our current agreement with enterprise leasing to try to find a just better option to save some money. We were able to both save money on the vehicles themselves and on the interest rate for that agreement. So this is a test to ensure that we can manage that program ourselves. A small amount of vehicles that we need this year to, you know, work through that. Hopefully, this goes well, and we can continue this on with a number of vehicles that we'll have to replace next year. Entertain any questions?
Any questions for Jeremy on that? All right, seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Chaney with a second from Alderman Turner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Chaney?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff? Oh, sorry, Alderman Dorhoff's excused. Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff, Fauch, and Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 18 is now Resolution 2025-09. Thanks, Jeremy. Okay, next up, we have the second reading of Council Bill 14.
Council Bill 14, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving a special use permit for the outdoor storage of empty and unused roll-off containers on land located at 2101 Clearwater Drive and parcel number 13-31-05-000-000-008.001 in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, Christina.
As stated, this is second reading. We have not received any emails or comments or phone calls of any kind on this application.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any further questions or any further discussion on that? Okay, this is the second reading. And I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Got a motion from Alderman Milner?
Second.
Second from Alderman Turner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Chaney?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff, Fauch, and Davidson are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 14 is now Ordinance 3721. Next up, we have the second reading of Council Bill 15.
Council Bill 15, an ordinance of Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville establishing the mechanic street overlay district boundaries as identified in the attached zoning map in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, thank you. I think Christina, you're back up.
Same thing. No additional phone calls or emails regarding this item. All questions we had came through public hearing process previous.
Yep, good discussions on that. All right, thank you. All right, this is the second reading of Council Bill 15. There's no other discussion or questions. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Franklin with a second from Alderman Chaney. Roll call, please.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Chaney?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff, Davidson, and Fauch are excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 15 is now Ordinance 3722. Next up, have a, I'm gonna open a public hearing on the vacation of a portion of the West Street right-of-way adjacent to lots 207 and 208 of Jack's Edition north of Polk Street. Christina, I think you're back up.
Thank you. Sir Alderman, Mayor, again, applicants, so requesting vacate a portion of the West Street right-of-way adjacent to lots 207, 208 of Jack's Edition north of Polk. The bulk of my report is basically the history, which there are still some holes in, unfortunately. Kind of run over, Jack's Edition was platted in October 19th of 1867. So it's part of the original town plat. It's when it was reported with the county and dedicated the now-existing West Street right-of-way at 66 feet shown to run north-south from an alley located just north of Washington Street to South Street. On January 6th of 1947, the Harvey subdivision plat was approved by the Board of Aldermen by Ordinance 309B and recorded with the Cass County Recorder's Office. This plat replaced blocks 19, 29, and portions of blocks 20 and 28 of Jack's Edition, which would have been part of where West Street goes through. July 27th of 1965, the Smith subdivision was recorded with the Cass County Recorder's Office, and that replaced blocks or portions of blocks 27, 28, and 20 of Jack's Edition. Again, kind of chipping away at some of that. I went through a lot of history and tried to find what happened with West Street because there were indications in the exhibit that part of it had been vacated or abandoned. So I searched through minutes from 1965 to 1978 based on looking at property records and what I could find from the county. But I was not able to find when West Street right-of-way that were shown to be vacated and abandoned on the attached exhibit were so vacated or abandoned. Pretty much the next day after I completed my report and submitted everything, I ran across something that indicated that the entire street was vacated back in 1942. This, obviously, something changed in between because, and this is why I said there's some holes there, because we still have a portion of West Street right-of-way. The ordinance, 267B, stated that they were vacating a portion of the street here and after described in Section 2 as a public street or alley, except the right of said city to build, maintain light, gas, water, and sewer lines therein when needed, and adjacent property owners have so petitioned. So the vacation of the right-of-way said all portions of West Street from the intersection north of, with North Street to the intersection with South Street in the City of Harrisonville. So still need some digging for the history between '42 when that happened and '65 when my previous search ended, to find out what's going on with the rest of it. But up to this point, we've had no issue with this request for vacation. So see no reason for it not to move forward. We're just gonna have to come back to that history and that piece. That does give the surveyor now something to point to as far as this was the ordinance number and this was the date. That was September 2nd of 1942. But staff is, again, supportive of the request to vacate this portion. The applicants are wanting to platter their lots together and this piece as well so that they can fence it all in to basically keep people, I think, from walking through the back of the property.
You weren't able to do that research on a computer, were you?
Actually, a very small portion, when I was trying to go back through the county. But there, I could stop after a certain point in time.
Yeah.
So then I was going through old board packets, trying to find it. And at one point, I just said, "Okay, I've spent too much time on this. I'm done with it." And I said, "I just happened to run across something the next day." And I'm like, "All right, I'm going to have to go back to this at some point because we need to know, we need to fix it."
Yep. Awesome. Well, thanks for all your work on that, for sure. All right, and this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this matter? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And we will move on with the first reading of Council Bill 19.
Council Bill 19, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen- Council Bill 19, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, vacating a portion of the West Street Right-of-Way adjacent to lots 207 and 208 of Jack's Edition north of Polk Street, and establishing an effective date.
Awesome, thank you. And that second reading, that'll come back for second reading on the May 19th Alderman meeting. So, all right, thank you. Next up, we have Alderman and Committee Reports. Alderman Mills, I'm going to start with you, so I don't forget about you there.
No, nothing to report this evening, Your Honor.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Chaney?
I don't have anything to add.
All right. Alderman Franklin?
I wanted to thank the Street Department again. Resident in Ward 3, Carol Larson, had some issues going on with sewers between Lexington, Missouri, and so, they were really good about coming out and getting those fixed in a timely fashion, so, once again, I appreciate the Street Department doing that. I wanted to wish all of the women here a Happy Mother's Day this coming next weekend. And just a reminder, too, with graduation coming up, all the kiddos are going to be out and about, and so be safe in your travels around town, and watch out for the kiddos that be out and about. That's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. Alderman Turner?
I have nothing.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Milner?
I was just going to touch on that. Seniors, today was seniors' last day, so they're already out and about.
Watch out.
Good luck to all of them.
Awesome, thank you. All right. Next is reporting to the Administrator, Mr. Rattler.
All right, so Comcast is doing a groundbreaking ceremony, May the 22nd, at 9:00 a.m. out at City Park. They're doing this groundbreaking as Comcast is going to be bringing fiber to the community underground. They plan on going underground through the community, so they are doing an actual ceremony on the 22nd at City Park at 9:00 a.m. Then, the third straight year, Harrisonville Public Works Department received the Spire's Civil Shovel Award, so that's a great accomplishment for the past three years for them. Becca Dite Storm Improvement Project, meaning discuss easements and project valued engineering is going on with staff. Sausure is hopefully on the 7th. They're having a testing to see if that can become live. FEMA and SEMA, that we reported, the Fifth House, that was involved with that buyout, it's backed out on that program, but the other four have been completed and done. Then, the airport project, we received a grant for it, and that's the trees that are further out for the requirement of FAA. And then, Anaconda Road Closure, MODOT grant. City staff met with MODOT, and will be working and getting information to you all about the closing of that, and the grant money due to that. If you all recall, that's been kind of a dangerous road crossing that we've had some problems with, and MODOT worked with us on that. Staff's in partnership, working with MPWA on the Grid Alliance Grant, which is a grant to hopefully begin underground of overhead distribution lines in the city. And then, the city staff are also working with the Clean Water Management Plan Grant to evaluate wastewater, stormwater, and drinking water systems. So additional grants that we'll be going forward with on that. City staff, the Police Department, had their drug take-back and took in a combined weight of 261.2 pounds of prescription drugs. Then, temporary fencing is going on at the Dog Park for the shade structure insulation at the Dog Park, and then Royal Construction's out at the Outdoor Pool, and be painting it and getting it ready for opening weekend on Memorial Weekend. With that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions from the media? I know. All that time we gave him, and that's all he had.
I kept it short, sweet.
That's, I'm not. All right, thank you for being here.
I had way too many meetings last month where I talked all the time.
Exactly. We've heard him a lot in the past month. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion from Alderman Turner, second from Alderman Chaney? Oh, from, oh, did you, Alderman?
Yeah, I have a second.
Okay, all right, from Alderman Franklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Take about five minutes, get some-